Action. I call a meeting to order at 6:17 for our September 1st, 2022 school committee meeting. Welcome, everybody. Welcome those of you at home. For those watching this video, we had a few technical difficulties, so we have some very supportive audience members who are helping us get this recording tonight. So we want to thank everybody for helping, and if the video looks a little different than normal, that's why. But we want to make sure that you get to see this, even if it's after the fact. So I'm going to come right into it with a summary of budget updates, please. My budget updates. We're the Black and United States of America. The Republic of America, one nation under God, in the name of justice. All right, and I think we're going to take a little bit of order. Is Mr. Chairman, will we take up donations as our first agenda item? So the motion to move that, in a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we have representative from the Lions with us tonight to go over the donations. Just let me get that on my screen. Second. Let me catch it up myself here. Just a little. All right.
Does it go copy?
Yeah, no, I'm good now. I have it there. Thank you. I'll have that just back up. Okay. So feel, please feel free to come, Lions? Please feel free to come right up here for us if you would mind. Don't, don't be shy. It's okay.
She even introduced herself to me at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm not sure she expected me to have her invited. I think this is great. I think it's really lots of bouncing stuff.
Would you, might I just say your name for us?
Jamie Taylor.
With the Plainfield Lions?
I'm with the Plainfield Lions Club. I've been a member for a little over like a year and a half, and we got together last weekend and we put together thirty backpacks for the school, and we, we brought them to the Wood School, where they're going to distribute them as needed.
Great. Thank you so much. That's a thank you.
Thank you. We serve our community.
Absolutely. So I would entertain a motion to accept thirty backpacks filled with school supplies at approximately the value of $1,000 from the Plainfield Lions Club with our thanks.
We shall salute greatly. Jen, second.
We have motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming as well. Have a good stay and enjoy, but we want.
First time.
All right. So let's go back to, we'll get the donations done. So what do we have tonight? We have, so we have our Prevent Community Impact Fund, and we have a donation of two cents, I believe, to Jackson. Is that correct? And ninety-five dollars to Wood. So I would entertain a motion to accept those funds for said purpose.
Shall we move? Jen, second.
Motion, a second, to accept those funds to our gift accounts to the school committee for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we have Base Date Text Diets with a donation of sixty-four fifty, and that's to Jackson?
That goes to technology.
Technology, okay. And then sixty-twenty-five?
Technology.
Technology. So I have motion to accept the Base Date Text Diets, sixty-four fifty and sixty-twenty-five for technology.
Shall we move?
Motion?
Jen, second.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have another donation from Masrow Inc., which is the Massachusetts School Board Organization?
School Business.
School Business, thank you. And for twenty-eight twenty-six. And that will go to general use?
Yes.
All right. And I have motion for that.
Shall we move? Jen, second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then we have a special donation. I believe that's our last one, correct?
Yes, it is.
All right. So we have a former student from the class of 2007 who is donating a gently-used acoustic guitar in picks approximately valued at fifty dollars. He is not here, right? Okay. But before we accept that, I'd like to read a letter from him, which I thought was very nice to submit with us. Hello. I wanted to include a little explanation and backstory about why I am donating this guitar. At this point, this classical guitar is over twenty years old, but has rarely been played. It was bought as a gift for my older brother, but he was not interested in learning how to play. Once he left, the guitar fell into my hands, but at the time, I was more focused on playing Guitar Hero in other video games instead of learning the real thing. Also, although I love music, guitar lessons were not really in our family budget, and I did not have the confidence to teach myself. When I went to the Beatrice H. Wood School, I remember that one issue my music teacher had was getting real instruments involved in the classroom. Now that I think about it, that struggle, all my music teachers had, was all my music teachers had. My music teacher would always look for students that played an instrument or local musicians that could come in and provide examples of the different ways music can be played. I still remember the first time I saw a harp being played was in class, and I remember the beautiful sound it made when the musician allowed me to play it. Recently, I reconnected with my love of music and decided to go out and purchase my home electric guitar. I am a little more confident now, so with the help of online lessons and videos, I'm in the process of teaching myself how to play. I'm also trying to learn a thing or two about music theory, but I wouldn't call myself a master just yet. I hope this guitar serves as an instrument that will give your music teachers the ability to teach many children about the joy that can come from playing music. I also hope that some of the students interested in playing can use their guitar for fun and as an introduction to playing music with a guitar. They may not know how to play it, but at the least, they can have an instrument available to them to play and learn. You may have the next Eddie Van Halen or Carlos Santana sitting in your classroom. You don't know who they are. Google them. The strings are new, and I tune them with an electric tuner. It's an old guitar, and it will need some tuning over time, but a simple electric tuner is easy to find and easy to use. I also included some picks as well. I know classical guitars are usually played with fingers, but a pick may make it easier for someone to play if they are new to play. If you would like to contact me, email, I'll give that. Hopefully, this story can show your students that how to play a musical instrument can start at any age. Thank you, Julian Hart, positive thousands of Wood School. So that was very nice. Thank you, Julian. We appreciate that, and I would entertain a motion to accept the guitar and picks for our music programs at the Wood School.
Shall we move?
Motion?
Jen, second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The passes. Thank you. And I believe that's all our donations for tonight. On this thing? On track. Okay. So back to the agenda. All right. Let's do our minutes, and then we'll get to our first day reports of our students, which I'm excited to hear about. So we have our minutes. So I would entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes for July 28th, 2022 estimate. Move? Motion? Second. And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes for the meeting of August 4th, 2022 estimate. So move? Motion? And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then this will be executive session minutes, so I retain a motion to accept and the approval of the executive session minutes to be held for the meeting on August 4th, 2022.
Jen, so moved?
Motion? For a second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And shall I turn it over to you, Ms. Parsons?
Sure. I'll open up, and then I will turn it over to two other special guests that we have here tonight. So one of the things that we've been thinking about is how we can involve our schools and our students a little more actively in our school committee meetings. And with the help of Mrs. Roberts-Crad, we were able to find some students, and also I should acknowledge the help of their parents, because none of them are driving age yet. But we have some students who are kind of excited and very willing to come and talk to us a little bit about the first day of school and the 2223 school year. So with us tonight, and I'm going to invite all three of you to come up to the front table here, and this is our P S. If you, maybe you have to stand behind you if you need any help or be there as a helper in the background. But we have Hope Thompson representing kindergarten. We have Eli and Tommy representing fourth grade, and we have Sarah Thompson representing our fifth graders. So the three of you in line is coming up and taking a seat right at the front.
Come on in. You sit right there. It's okay. Just those chairs. Bring those chairs there. All right, oh, you can sit down. Go.
So we talked a little bit about kind of what, what are some things that happened in the first couple of days of school? Maybe something exciting that happened in the classroom? Something you learned? Maybe something that surprised you? There's kind of no right answer or wrong answer here. It's just what did school feel like when, when you started this year?
Who wants to go first? Everybody shy? Go ahead and tell us. How was it? What was your first day?
Well, the best part was meeting all my friends and the, one of the best teachers I could have gotten, whom I was wishing for all summer, and the worst part of every day is leaving school, because everyone's so kind, super nice.
Well, that's wonderful.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
You did a great job.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay.
So I started fifth grade yesterday, and since I've done a lot of stuff to get to know my teachers and my classmates, and we've done some
Stan.
Stan experiments and challenges.
That's wonderful.
Did you, did you have a fun, was it a fun first day?
Yes.
What's your sister's name?
Hope.
Hope? Hi, Hope. It's okay. Don't be shy.
You know, Hope is, is shy, and I understand that, because it's hard being on camera. So can you tell us, who is Hope's teacher?
Hope's teacher is Miss Mayard.
And did she have a good first day?
I think so.
You think so?
I think she was most excited for the bus.
The bus.
You got to ride the bus, sweetie? That's wonderful.
It is fun.
What was the bus ride? Was it amazing?
Well, we appreciate that all of you are here, that you're sitting there. That's, it's brave to do that, so thank you.
You should be so proud of yourselves, kiddos. You did a great job, and I'm so glad it went well.
This is only the first day. It's just going to get better.
You guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you for coming.
We'll be cutting your jobs very soon. Excellent job, everybody. Thank you to parents.
Yes, they bring them down. They're awesome.
Thank you.
So I believe we're going on to commendations?
Yes, I had some commendations for the same. Certainly some commendations for our peer permissions here. That was greatly appreciated, and I do hope that we will have more opportunities to bring students and families into the committee so you can get a little sense of what's, what's happening during the day. One thing that I will share with the committee is that Lori Duran, I know everyone knows Lori Duran, our community teacher at Jackson, she spent quite a bit of time this week putting together a video set to music, a very professional piece that she's put together for all of us. And we thought about showing it this evening, but it's just a little bit too early. We don't have all of the photo permissions yet, so we didn't want to make any mistakes with that. So it has been shared out with the committee. You do have that in your email for you just to get another sense of what are some of the things that we've been engaging in and what does more of their, their peers look like and some of our educators look like in the classrooms. So more to come. In terms of some of the commendations that I'm just really pleased to share, it doesn't seem like it's that long ago that I received a phone call when I was actually in a school committee meeting of my own from you, our chairperson, offering me this position, and here we are tonight after having what I would consider a very successful opening to the 202223 school year. And while I've been in the office and been in the district for the majority of the days since July 1st, I can only take a small part of the credit for our ability to open our schools safely and really smoothly for our students. And there's quite a comprehensive list here, and I fear that maybe someone has been forgotten, but I, I tried to kind of touch all, all constituents and all stakeholders in our schools. So even straight teams, some of whom are here tonight, I just can't say enough about this team. The amount of support that I've received since joining this team has been incredible. They, they just, there, there's nothing that people would have done to get me situated and get this year up and running for our kids, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Our bestowed meal team and our maintenance team, if anyone has had the opportunity to see the insides of the buildings, they are shining, and people have had the opportunity to see the outside and the grounds work that has been done by our maintenance team. It, it's really been transformative over the past several weeks, and it's made a big difference. Our technology team, Stephanie's here tonight, you know, getting everything that we need in order to start school, our devices, devices for summer programs, new technology, new programs, cleaning up everything from last year. It's, it's kind of peculiar undertaking, and they, our team has done a really great job. Our administrative assistants at the building level, they've been in, in and out all summer long. Christina's sitting at her desk pretty much every day this summer right alongside with me, and they, they also have many, many tasks that are undertaken in order to keep the year up and running. Our business office with Young and Sarah, pretty amazing work that they have been able to accomplish. On behalf of the district, with everything from name badges to purchase orders to warrants to, you know, walking the new superintendent through budget, that's, again, it's been a lot of work, and there's certainly been a lot of things we've needed to purchase in order to keep the year up and running, and everyone is getting paid. So that's all, we're very grateful. You know, our, at our building level, you know, seeing our principals clearly, Robyn Carolyn, have been in all summer long, but seeing you in action with your educators, with our nurses, our parent professionals, the contracted services providers, everyone really plays a very important role, and there, there's no one that I can say that I reached out to over the course of the summer who was not responsive or receptive to, could you commit for a meeting? Can we have a conversation? Can you give us some history? Classrooms were set up. We have time secured through the educator contract to get classrooms set up, but many, many, many of our teachers were in long before these kind of end hour. Our food service team provided us with a really nice breakfast on the opening day, which I think gave people kind of a sense of, oh, this is how we used to do things. We used to be able to congregate and have a cup of coffee and have a piece of Danish, and that, that really felt nice to have that normalcy back, and Debbie and Shelley did really did a nice job with that for us. We've worked closely with our chiefs, our police chief, our fire department, our safety officers, our school resource officers, our crossing wire and more. We, we just had a lot of support from the town side in, in terms of ensuring, you know, let's really start to talk about, you know, how we're promoting safety and maintaining safe school environments tonight. I look forward to more partnerships with that team as well. We had a nice meeting with our bus drivers recently, and they came in and they were ready to roll, and it seemed like our buses moved smoothly over the past couple of days. Our PTO and all, and all of our families, I'll touch a little bit later in a different update that I've, that I've given on some of the things the PTO has been involved in, and certainly our school committee. I think this is a long list, and I appreciate your patience as I went through it, but without, you know, all of these hands in the pot, I don't think we would have had as smooth of an opening as we had, and as you'll, you'll see on my endscept tape, there are a lot of smiling faces and a lot of kids who seemed really happy, and a lot of teachers and educators too. So I'd say overall, a lot of commendations, very well deserved.
Thank you. It's great to hear. I've heard good things about the opening too, so that's, that's a plus very much so. So I guess we'll get into our committee reports. We have our King Philip School Committee Report. And so we finished with Mr. Brenice, and we're working over towards our negotiations subcommittee.
So our, we met a couple of times with the Estadio Union. The latest was on Monday, and that went very well. We have a tentative agreement with the union, and we'll be looking to gratify it tonight.
Thank you. Communications Subcommittee.
Communications, nothing to report.
Sickly, bad.
Sickly, thankfully, nothing to report.
Wellness Committee.
Nothing to report at this time.
School visualization, we will not need going forward. And Budget Subcommittee. Nothing, nothing, nothing new to report. Everything is going as planned. Going as planned, and we'll discuss a little bit of the budget post a little bit later. Resignations, transfers, appointments, and retirements.
Yes, I believe that is a document that you should have in your board docs that Christine was able to post for you, and some action required on that, which is something inspirational.
Okay. Well, we're going to turn it back over to Mrs. Parsons for her superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. So I will combine, these things are listed as letter A and letter B in the agenda, and so I'll combine the summer 22 program report with the opening of school report. So briefly, I know you've heard little bits and pieces about the summer learning academies that we've had and extended year program this summer, but I just wanted to kind of codify it in one of our meetings so you have, you know, a little more of a sense of what really went on. So the extended school year program, that's the program that is run by Dr. Darden and her team. We had just slightly over one hundred students in attendance this summer. It was a five-week program, and the program entailed both academics and related services. And by related services, we talk about things that aren't necessarily academic, but things that are important in terms of getting students up and running and prepared for their academic learning. Occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, social emotional learning, that sort of thing. All of those are areas that are essential for this summer. We use two different models in the extended school year program. In some cases, students, especially at the younger grades, were co-horted into a classroom model, and in other cases, especially with our older students, students had more targeted tutoring in more kind of one-to-one or small group sort of setting. Students at the younger levels, for the most part, came in for those classes and they stayed a little bit longer, whereas students coming in for the tutoring sessions kind of transitioned in and out, maybe one student would come for an hour, another student, and so forth. The goal of our extended school year, and this is a program that is mandated by law, is really to prevent regression. And in other words, all the progress that student makes over ten months, we all know that if you don't kind of continue to use those skills over the summer, sometimes we have some regression skills, and the point is not to move new learning forward, it's to really make sure we maintain the skills that our educators and students worked so hard to develop over the course of the school year. The Acceleration Academy, again, I think you've already heard a little bit about that. That was a grant-funded academy, and that was run by Katie Hyrdie, who was the leading teacher at the Jackson School, and that academy was able to house forty students. It was a one-week intensive program where students stayed from eight-thirty in the morning until one-thirty in the afternoon, and that focused exclusively on English language arts. The goal of that academy really is additional access to reading and writing. So more, more times than that, more opportunities, more, more, more times to really just develop and hone those skills in a way that feels fun and enjoyable and just a little bit different in the summer. So just a couple of photos from both of those two programs. I can also promise you, and you see Lori Duran's video, it'll be far more Hollywood as. We had one photo, you can see students, they've got books in front of them, and they're writing in response to the test. And the very smiley faces there are our girls who have just engaged in some sort of a dramatic representation of something that they read. So they were just acting along with their reading. In these cases, this is actually from E S Y, and you'll see one of the students at one of our peer touchboards over to the far right, so there was certainly the use of technology, both for, you know, stand-up interactive models, and through some very targeted programming that we used as well. Students working in small groups, collaborating, problem-solving, and I can't really tell you too much about what happened in the tent, but I know that the tent is still up and running at Jackson School, and I think kids really love any kind of alternate place to do their work and sometimes take a little break in a reader. So those are just a couple of examples of some of the things that happened there. One of the things that I always hear Dr. Darden talk about when she refers to her E S Y program is what she calls Bike Week, and even though while I can think of whatever happens in Daytona, you know, our Bike Week is, you know, how do you support a student who's, he become dependent on training wheels, and how do you help them graduate to that next level? So our occupational therapists and physical therapists really work with our students at the E S Y program, and all of the educators there really encourage the students during the week that they focus on bike skills to, you know, kind of put those training wheels aside and build their confidence on the road. So that's really kind of a wrap of the summer programs. I don't know if anyone has questions on those before, and I wanted to kind of do this quantologically, so work us through the summer and then work us up to the first day.
No, I'd just like to say thank you to you and all the staff who pulled it together, because I know a lot of it came up quick, and thank you from me and for anybody else to chime in, but it was amazing. I stopped in, saw the program, it was, it was amazing, and the effort and seeing the staff in there over the summer, and you could see how much the kids were having a good time and enjoying it and learning something. So thank you from me personally. Please feel free. Thank you, Nick.
And I love seeing these pictures. I mean, it's clear the kiddos are having fun, the teachers are so engaged, it's, it's just a wonderful program. So thank you to everyone involved.
Katie Hyrdie was nice enough to walk me through some of the children. She's an amazing educator, and she's supported by her and the rest of the staff. We appreciate that very much.
Very fortunate.
One of the smiling children is a friend of a friend named, had told how much she loved going there every day, so I heard about that. She'd be doing parent pickup for us from other camps, she'd go, if she's not to school, that's a big deal, and she wants to go. So I know that that was a genuine smile.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay. So we get to back to school. I know any moms who feel that way. Maybe just one or two. So here we are. We've gone through the first week of school. First and foremost, thank you to our P T O. They really brought us up and running in just such a nice way with, we walked into all of these messages, both schools on the first morning with our students. The only kind of unfortunate part was that it had arraigned that evening, but I do understand that the, all of these pictures that they took were memorialized on Facebook, so if people are interested in looking at some of the messages, but they've named many, many staff members, just very, very, very thoughtful gesture. So just a little bit of a summary of kind of where we've been over the past couple of weeks. We all gathered at Jackson School on Monday morning. It was definitely a full house. Mr. Adam Xander, we were fortunate to have you with us that day as well, and both schools and the direction of both of our principals had a number of welcoming events for our families. I know I saw some of our committee members at those events with their children, hoppies with the principal, scavenger hunt at Wood. Those were very well received and just very feel-good activities. Meet and greets were held at both schools. We had lots of people kind of gathering in the lobbies, getting ready to be released into the classrooms, very well attended. I think that we had some students who definitely shared some nerves and displayed some nerves, but honestly, the greetings that are, I've never really seen anything like it, the enthusiasm on the part of the Wood and Jackson faculty when they saw our students, it, it really was breathtaking. The screaming kids' names across the hallway and the hugs and the high fives, and, you know, as you said, Michelle, genuine, I think that really, it was very genuine in our felt. Some people wonder sometimes, you know, what happens on those two days when my children are home for still two more days and the teachers are working and what's going on[1755.71] for still two more days and the teachers are working and what's going on in that place? So through a lot of meetings, a lot of time spent with colleagues, a lot of planning, a lot of schedule building, a lot of figuring out, you know, how are we going to work things this year? And while our educators worked on those things, the district also offered professional development on leader strategies and on our foundation science instruction for our power professionals. And we really thank our two principals, Stephanie and Dargan, for their work in pulling all of that together. I think for our power professionals, they're often a frontline with our students and it's, I think, very professionally fulfilling for them to have access to the same type of academic training and behavioral training that our teachers have as well. So that seemed to go very well. Yesterday, the first day for students, again, very positive. Some stories that were recorded to me were even of some teachers who got teary-eyed when they saw the former students realizing, oh, I don't have them anymore. They moved on. But it is also just very fulfilling when you see children meet each other in the lobby and they're walking down together in that moment of, oh, I see a friend. There are a lot, a lot of those moments. We had, as I said, a nice meeting with bus drivers and we're grateful for them getting our students to school from Holmes Bus Company. I think we've heard a lot of stories in the news about transportation debacles and I'll knock them with right now between Holmes Bus Company and our man pool. So far, things seem to be running smoothly. And those are some of the things that we can't always control, so we're grateful that things have worked out. So here are just a few more pictures of, I'll capture a little bit of the opening. So these are some of the very nice messages. You know, this wage, one amazing school here, students. The P T O put little goody bags in our mailbox with, you know, some nice little sugary drinks for us with a very nice message for all our educators. Again, as I referred to earlier, we don't have all of the photo notes yet, but, you know, these are the yellow buses rolling in, you know, staff members high-fiving kids. I think you hear a lot about, you know, what does that greeting look like? How do our kids feel when they first, you know, enter the school property? And I don't think you can feel much better than getting high-fived by one of the adults when you arrive. And with school, I think this is just one of those perpetual pictures of sixth graders and learning those lockers and, you know, getting, getting what they need done. So I know I heard you, Mrs. R P, talking with some students, you'll get it, you'll get it. So that's really the opening update. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, Lori.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I felt what you said, the, uh, the events, the meet and greets, the scavenger hunts, everyone involved and Mrs. R P, Ms. Kerrigan, you're here. I know you were working that board. Mrs. R P was out in the heat, offering very, very nice treats to the kiddos. And that's such a wonderful way. It made me feel better because then I get to get a little sneak peek where my kiddos are going to be spending all this time and it just made my kiddos feel so at home. So I just want to thank everyone involved. It was incredible. What a wonderful job you guys have done. So thank you very, very much.
Well, so thanks for sharing.
Thank you. Uh, we had a COVID update if you, if you're there. No one really wants COVID update, but it is very, very simple. The only things I would like to remind the community of is the superintendent's page on the Plainville Public Schools website does have the most updated COVID information. It is the exact same information at this point in time as I have emailed out to our families, but in the event that someone doesn't want to dig for emails or can't find it, it is there. Thank you, Stephanie, for putting that up there for us. And the other thing I wanted to make sure the community is aware of, and I believe you received, sent an email from me as well, there will be a COVID vaccine clinic scheduled on September thirteenth from three o'clock until six-thirty in the afternoon that will be at King Philip Middle School. And that was organized by Doc Pearl, who is the Regional Wellness Director. And she's done a very nice job communicating, in my estimation, with all of the districts that she serves and really trying to get this message out and running. I will say one more thing and it's not COVID-related, so you can stop me, but it is date-related and I couldn't find another place in the agenda to add this in. I know that Charlotte's reporting will come out, but we did receive an email today from the planning board in town that there will be a master plan committee meeting and they'll be inviting community members. They are trying to kick off the, a master plan committee and they're really interested in hearing what the residents of Plainville are interested in seeing as the town looks forward and looks towards growth and things like that. They're really looking for input from residents over where you see Plainville in the next ten years. So that meeting will be held on September twenty-second in this same room. And it looks like I did not write down the time of that meeting, but I will, there's a communication that I'll send out to people. But they are specifically looking for input from parents.
I think that falls right in on your superintendent's report.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're on to whole business. We have some financial items we have to take care of, housekeeping mainly. So the first thing we have to deal with is our special ed reserve fund. For those who don't know, this is a fund that is funded at town meeting and is a modeling fund that we can utilize for special ed costs. And it's a joint vote and we have to use it between ourselves as the school committee and the select board. And then those funds will be accessible to the schools to use for special ed purposes. Really good summary?
Yes, very good.
All right. But as a result of processes that we have to follow, we have to take a vote. And the recommendation from Mrs. Parsons and Mrs. Clark is that we vote to use the hundred eighty thousand in the account from special ed reserve account for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-three special education costs. Our town administrator's been involved because obviously it's a joint vote and we have to make a vote on our end to do so. And if you have any additional comments you would like to make about that? You don't have to, just make it short. Cover it. All right. Any questions to the committee on that before I ask a further motion? Just as far as my explanation is clear enough, if there are any questions? Pretty good? All right. So then our tentative motion that we approve the use of one hundred eighty thousand dollars from the special ed reserve account for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three special education costs.
Jen, some root?
For a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the topic? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So now we have to move on to our F Y twenty-three budget. So a couple of things that happened. We all know the budget process was interesting and we were funded in a way that we can be functional this year and it is a very complicated way of doing it, but it got it done. And, but one thing that did change is we took a vote leading in the town meeting for a budget that's higher that was approved at town meeting. But we knew that if we got the additional warrant articles to help supplement our budget, that we would be made whole, which did in fact happen. Everything passed. But as a matter of accounting, we have to vote the budget that was accepted at town meeting, knowing that we have, as you can see in the document that was provided, the additional funds to make our balances, you know, a balanced budget. So we had to actually vote that new number. But nothing changes. No services are changing. There's no problem. It's just a procedural item. So, you know, if there's any discussion on it, we'll entertain a motion to approve a budget of eight billion one hundred forty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars as the F Y twenty-three town approved budget. And then I will ask, Ms. Clark, do we need to talk about the other items as part of that or you just need that one, a one-number voting?
You have to vote that acknowledging that this item is being used.
And I would also add to that motion of entertainment that we have one hundred and seventy-two thousand eighty-three dollars as a F Y twenty-two prepay for our budget. We could prepay our special education costs going forward. And then we have forty-five thousand dollars at town meeting that was used for capital, for construction material. And then we had use of our special education reserve fund from the town meeting article, which is one seventy-three, seven, seven, five. That's the number to get the balance to zero, which means that we're a balanced budget. So all those numbers together, that would give us a budget of eight million five hundred thirty-seven dol-, five hundred thirty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. And that is in motion. Somebody will be willing to make it.
Jen, some root?
For a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, educational priorities based on the additional funding. I think that should be a good time to turn it back over to Mrs. Parsons and maybe Mr. Allen to discuss what they want to hear.
Sure. I do think, Christine, I think you put this document, but it was late this afternoon on board docs, but it's very much like a hard copy of the, the.
Oh, sure.
Steve, would you like to start or would you like me to?
I'd like you to start.
Okay, sure. So I think, you know, all of the members are very well aware of the context and the history of why we are having this conversation, both historically in Plainville in terms of issues that have been lost along the way and needs that we're currently facing and the opportunity for some unanticipated funding that the town has been able to share with the schools outside of town meeting and outside of last year's budget discussions, but newly identified funding. And Brian Noble has been here recently and he's talked a little bit about this and he's listened to some of the presentations that we've made. And as we all know, because we were all here, we were part of some, I would say, rather robust conversations about what our priorities are and if we were to have some additional funding, what would that look like and where would we start? And also just to clarify, those discussions happened at the school committee table, but they did also happen with our administrative team, just so we can be sure that everyone's thinking has been represented and that we're making kind of smart decisions with some of our funding. So recently, Brian Noble has been able to commit to us an additional one hundred thousand dollars. So originally, we weren't sure what this funding call would look like, if there would be any funding, but he feels confident that a one hundred thousand dollar addition to the school budget would be beneficial and be manageable by the town. So going back to the priorities that we discussed, what I've done tonight is I've put together a recommendation for the positions that I believe would best serve our district at this time with a very small explanation next to each because, as I said, we've already discussed the reasons for these. But in case people really are hearing us on the recording, I will articulate as a point-five reading teacher at the Wood School at approximately fifty thousand dollars, a point-four band director for the Wood School at approximately just under forty thousand dollars, and additional behavior support for both schools where the needs may lie through our board service, our behavior analyst, and perhaps behavior technicians at a funding level of eleven thousand dollars. And when all of those things come together, that, that would give us our hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, my, my request tonight would obviously be for the school committee to discuss this, to share any thoughts, questions you may have on this. And I hope that after this evening's meeting, we'll have a direction and that we'll be able to start posting some positions and moving on this.
Okay, Mr. Allen?
This is a, thank you. This is a result of many weeks of discussions and meetings and conferences and I, I wanted to mention that I think that our town partners have really come through for us. Growth is an important part of the story for our future of the town. And due to the fact that there has been growth and there has been a pro-growth policy in place as a town, we're able to come up with some solutions to problems earlier in the process than perhaps most of us anticipated. This would not have taken place for a spirit of cooperation that now exists between the different departments within the town. It represents a change in course. It represents a comeback. It represents the first steps in what I call the restoration services back to the Plainville Public Schools. When I ran for a school committee, I said over and over that I thought the best days for the Plainville Public Schools were ahead. And sometimes the result or the response to that wasn't always, gee, I'm a hundred percent with you. It, I ran into some doubt from some people on that. And I think that we've faced that doubt and we've turned it around. I think the recommendations that Mrs. Parsons is making tonight are worthy of support. But again, I want to emphasize that this is a step in the right direction. It's not the beginning and end of it. It's indeed the very beginning of everything. And I fully support this request for funding allocation.
Thank you. Certainly open up to the committee for comment.
I'm just, I'm thrilled to be having this conversation. This is wonderful and one hundred percent having support.
Do you have any support, lines up with the values that we talked about, positions that will be, you know, featured? Any other discussions? Okay. So at the request of our superintendent, I would entertain a motion that we approve the educational fairies based on the additional funding presented by Mrs. Parsons.
Jen, some root?
In a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the topic?
Do you need that motion to have any instructions regarding the posting of positions or is that general enough vote for you to go ahead and post positions so that we can start this right away?
It is. And, you know, I guess the one thing that I will share with the committee is that if anything were to vary from this plan, I would keep the committee informed. And the only way I could see any variation in this plan would be if a position came in less than anticipated in terms of the amount of funding that would be needed. So I estimated these in a way that we don't usually do in public education. As I think I might have said earlier, I estimated these at the very high end. Or if, you know, there's unfortunate circumstance and we're not able to find exactly what it is we're looking for and we have to kind of reconfigure, I would come back to you and explain what is happening. But in terms of how you're, you bring the motion, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
So motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, four one. Okay, motion counts. All right. Challenging the course. Quick update on that. I heard back from Jim Hardy. He can do October twentieth. I believe that's the second meeting on October date. That'll be on reserve date at five-thirty.
I'm sorry, we should have had the meeting at one?
Certainly. October twentieth at five-thirty. Would that work? I know that's sometimes tight for you, but that's, that's the time I got. I can see I can push him to six and I can try that. If that works too. I don't think we're going to mark your tardies, so I think you'll be all right. You've been through the virtual one, right? Yes, I mean, you're technically, so who actually is coming? I think that's important. Well, now I have to go. You're going to go.
I'll be here. I did the virtual, but I don't have to.
One, two, yeah. So just like give him the number. Okay. So, and Mrs. Shaw, you have already been through the impersonal one, so you're good.
Yes.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? And now? Okay.
And did you say that in the early meeting, this is a four-hour training?
It's an evening. Who's calling me? I don't know exactly. It's an evening. I don't want to box myself into how many hours there's.
It's a sleepover.
I'm not the one teaching that. If it's three, four, five, so.
Bring a snack.
It's, it's an evening, uh, learning about, uh.
I have some more questions you have at the end.
This is recorded. I have a lot. All right. So is everybody good with that? I would need a vote or anything. I just want everybody to know and make sure that fits and I'll confirm with him. Continuation of our weatherization project, Mrs. Parsons?
Yes, really, that is just an update on where we are. So I think as the committee is aware, we have several green communities, grant projects ongoing. Those were started by Mr. Raish prior to me, so I can't take any credit for the great work, but I will certainly support the project moving forward. So I received some communication this week that the weatherization project at the Wood School, excuse me, the Jackson School is getting ready to start. A lot of these projects have been pushed off a little bit, which probably is no surprise to anybody due to availability of, you know, their staff, availability of materials and things like that. So it, and really beyond a lot of people who applied for these grants. So these companies are busy. But Guardian, who is our company who's orchestrating this, has told us that we will have people on-site on September twenty-third for the weatherization project and they do believe that they will be able to complete the job in one day's time and they will also assure us of the average school hours. So that, that is upcoming in just a couple of weeks. We continue to be in contact with them as well about the heat pump work at Jackson School as well. And right now, we are in a holding pattern, waiting for them to identify the dates when they will have their crews to come out and work with us. Again, it will be second shift work outside of school hours and for checks and all of that, employees will be on-site.
Excellent. All right. I believe that just for informational purposes, we had the enrollment, right? There's no, nothing on that? All right, we're on to new business. Yeah, pretty good. So we have a handbook update for the parent, student handbook.
Yes. What I will say about that is we, the four districts, the three regional districts plus King Philip, got together last week. Was it last? Yeah, I think it was last week and we had a. And we had a wonderful presentation by a lifelong educator named John Doria. And he really invigorated us and talked a lot about leadership and all of that. And then our administrative team are such dedicated people that they said, instead of running back to their buildings after that, we're going to sit right at, we sat right at one of the North Hope Elementary Schools. And we pulled out the handbook and got it updated for this year. So we really wanted to make sure that it's up and running for our families. So we get that out to people. And because I think handbooks can definitely be cumbersome, we did not want to sit in this meeting and go through, you know, a whole, this is on page five, this is on page 10. So to try to simplify for the committee, clearly, obviously, you're welcome to read through the whole thing as much as you'd like. But the changes are summarized in a one-page document for you. And I would say that essentially, you know, and Rob, please feel free, you know, Stephanie, you were there too. Please feel free to chime in if you think, if you want to add anything to this. But essentially, we cleaned up some language. In a few cases, there was some language that we felt could be better framed from more of a positive perspective than, you know, we will do this rather than we will not do that. We cleaned up pronouns, you know, we've been smorg, better fluid, I guess, for lack of a better word. He, removing he and she and putting they. We acknowledged the lunch program is free this year. We updated all of the names and all of the changes that have been made to personnel. And, you know, for the most part, I think you can, I don't want to trade the whole thing to you, but I, I think you can see that the types of changes were made were mostly either to document processes in ways that things are already happening or just to essentially clean up language. Please feel free to add it if it was anything different.
I think we just followed the policies and it was really just tightening up and making it reflect what we're doing, the practices that we're following today.
So we would, you know, ask for a motion or, or vote of the committee to accept the handbook so we can know that we're moving into this year with, with a document that we feel better about. The one other caveat that I will add is that we did feel collectively that there's probably some more work to be done with the handbook in terms of really making it current and really just, just kind of freshening it up a little bit. But given the timing and everything this year, that will be a project for next summer.
Thank you. I appreciate the revisions document. I made it a lot easier to run them side by side and go to the right. The page numbers actually lined up too, which was good. So, you know, and I think that that's a jump off point for us as well as a school committee for our policies. So at some point, as we get a little aggro with the ball here, to start tackling that as well. But any else before the motion, any discussion to follow on from Mrs. Parsons on these? I didn't find anything too unusual, a lot of housekeeping cleaning up. It's nice to see about the lunches again, I know we talked about it last meeting, but it's nice to see that actually in black and white, so. All right, well then, I would attempt to entertain a motion to approve the parents' handbook update 2022, 2023, as submitted.
Jen, so moved.
For a second.
In a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Stay. So I haven't had enough time to deal with it.
So we have, yes, one second. So we have the new custodian contract, next item. So as pointed out during the budget subcommittee, we had update, we had, I'm sorry, the negotiator's subcommittee update. We made progress with the custodians to the point that we have a tentative MOU that we need to vote tonight. And it, the ratified by the custodians as well. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the new custodian contract as submitted to the school committee, let it review.
Michelle, so moved.
Motion.
Jen, second.
And I have a second. Any discussion on this? Very none, all those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, so we did all of our nominations already. What else do we have? We have, I think, a little public comment that I missed.
We have something on 12G, which is items non-anticipated. And that is, there is an attachment. It is just a vote for Superintendent Parsons to be on Board of Directors for BIKO.
Okay, I know this is something that you've already been helping take care of, so.
Yes.
Then I would entertain a motion to approve Mrs. Parsons as the, what was the position?
The board of representatives.
To the board, a representative to the Board of Directors of the BIKO Club, thank you.
Michelle, so moved. Jen, second.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Okay, where are we at? Public comment? Any public comment? But I'm not on the agenda. Nothing heard. All right, anything else that I missed?
I just want to say thank you to our videographer. I'm sure your arms are very tired. I appreciate what you're doing tonight, so thank you very much, Stephanie.
Absolutely. And I would just reiterate that if the video appears unusual tonight, it is because we went to alternate technology. We are an adaptable committee and we made this work. And thank you for the support of our attendees for making this happen. So bear with us if you're watching this at home, if the audio is a little off or something's different. We wanted to get you something instead of having nothing. So thank you so much for the effort to get it out there.
We'll ice you down.
All right, hearing nothing else, I'm going to take the motion to a chair.
Jen, second.
And our next meeting before we vote that is going to be, unless needed, we're out of here. The October 6th. Make sense? October 6th at 6:00 PM, right in this room. So with a motion in a second, all those in favor?
I.
Shaw, I.
Good. Go public, go public.
Baloney, same deck.
Alex, either I, Albert, I. And that's it. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.